Welcome to the Blueworth County Board of Commissioners meeting of November 22, 2022. And at this time, we all rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have the agenda?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Move the agenda. Second. Remove the agenda.
Second.
Second by Vance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Okay, first up on the docket is a good morning, and our hearing today is the final hearing on the proposed petition for partial reroute abandonment for portions of County ditch 63. Purpose of the hearing is to consider the petition and public comment for the proposed petition. At this point, we'll have Ryan Henner bring up the judicial, the documents and notices.
Morning, Ryan.
Morning, everyone. I have a quick memo for the County ditch 63 final hearing. Purpose of today is a petition pursuant to Minnesota statute 103E.227 for partial abandonment and reroute proportions of County ditch 63. Public drainage system was received by Blueworth County Property and Environmental Resources staff on February 18 of 2022. The petitioners are asking for the partial abandonment and reroute for two portions of main line and outlet tile for the portions of County ditch 63 located primarily in section 21 of Decoria Township. The petition reroute tile line currently exists and has been examined by engineering staff from ISG. At today's hearing, we are requesting the approval of the findings in order, authorizing the partial abandonment and reroute proportions of County ditch 63. Hearing notices were sent out on November 7 to landowners, and also publication of affidavit was ran on November 1, 8, and 15 in the Mankato Free Press. That is all I have for this one.
Okay. Can you get a motion to accept the affidavits into the legal record?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. All right. Now, we're here from the engineering staff to discuss, to provide an engineer's report. Want to give your name and address?
Certainly. Darryl Pettis, I am an engineer for ISG. Chuck Randall was appointed to do this report because Chuck was not able to attend the meeting today. He was in, he's in Watanen County. So, I will be doing a very brief PowerPoint here to describe some of the highlights from our report that was sent to the county. A copy of the full report was included in the board packet, and in the back of the room, there is a very brief three-page handout, and I did provide copies to the county board and to county staff, and there are a couple back there if any of the landowners or audience members would like to grab them. So, with that, I will start. Our presentation today includes seven parts. I will try to be fairly brief on this. Starting with, you have received a petition. This is what was stated in the petition, the request to basically cut off the existing outlet and move the outlet approximately 235 feet downstream, and then to construct a rock chute, riprapping the channel to deal with some erosion issues that have occurred along County ditch 63. This is just a little bit more verbiage out of the petition, what the petitioners are requesting you to look at. I won't read all of those. Basically, have an engineer look at them, determine if there's some dollars available to help them pay for the project, and then also consider what's called separable maintenance or the reduction in the repair cost or future repair cost for the system. To undertake our analysis, we did run our tile camera through the tile to look at its existing condition, and we did compare that condition to what is generally, we have specifications for Blueworth County tile systems that we do work on for the county. Just a little history, County ditch 63 was constructed in 1920, so it's just over 102 years old, consists of about 10,000 feet of buried tile from about eight-inch to, I believe, there's some 30-inch tile out there. There's been some feasibility studies done on the system about eight, nine years ago looking at its condition, and there's been a couple of changes out there with the reconstruction on Trunk Highway 22, new crossings put in, and there's been just the normal maintenance of the system, some tile repair and things like that. These pictures are actually from our tile camera. This is the old system, the 1920 system. It was designed relatively small drainage coefficient. We talk about tile, we always talk about inches per day of drainage, a, that's the amount of water that can be taken off the watershed by a tile. A generally, a well-designed system in today's standards is that half-inch drainage coefficient can take off a half-inch of water off the watershed. The tile on County ditch 63 is from that 12-hundredths of an inch up to 2.1 inches per day, depending on which piece of the main that you're on. The outlet of the main is around .23. This picture is included in the package or the handout. This is just the existing system with all the different domains and all the different branches and what part of Decoria Township that it does drain. As you can see from the handout, the outlet on the main is roughly .23 or quarter inch per day coefficient as the system was designed 100 years ago. This is just a little bit blown-in picture of the petitioned area. It's that little green line, you really can't see it very well on there. It's right at the outlet where it does drain into the ravine, which drains into the protected water, the public water. A little bit more blow-up, you can see that dash green line, that's the rock chute and then the extension of the tile, roughly 1,300 acres of drainage area on County ditch 63. This is just a picture of the petitioned work. What the red lines was the, as constructed, as provided to us in the petition, you can see the rock chute and then the tile reroute, eliminating the outlet and then bringing the tile around to lose some grade and then drop it at the end of the rock chute. It was 24-inch HDPE tile they used to connect to the 24-inch concrete tile, and they're running at just, just over 2% grade on that tile, and about 6.2% on the rock chute. Petition work here is also the copy of their profile. You can see the rock chute and then also the tile grade. The proposed capacity of the petition project is 0.67, which exceeds the 0.23 existing drainage coefficient of the existing outlet. So, there is more than adequate capacity within the, the new system, for the petition system. As Blueworth County is very well aware, tile installation, we do, when we do work for Blueworth County, we have specifications for the county. Those specifications include tile installation, that we want the tile installed within a tenth of a foot of elevation, we want the gaps between the individual sticks of tile to be one inch or less for the pipe gap, we want deflection of 5% or less, and we also want all the tile connections to be a watertight type of fitting, gasketed type of fitting, which you can see in the picture, that's the green, the green fitting sticking out. So, those are our general specifications, we do work in Blueworth County. It's difficult to tell the installation. This is just off of our pipe rover, it kind of looks at the highs and lows of the tile, but this does meet our specification for tile installation as far as elevation. Here's a picture of the tile gap. Roughly the two red dots are about an inch apart, so this tile gap does also meet our specification, Blueworth County specification for the installation. We did measure deflection, we didn't find any places that had more than 5% deflection within the new tile. And we also looked at the tile connections, there's about four or five tile connections, and they all had gasketed fittings, which you can see in the picture up on the screen. Another request of the petition was to prepare a separable maintenance amount. This is the amount of future maintenance that would be deferred from the system, the system not having to pay for by the, the improvement or the petition project, and we came up with a cost of $14,768 for separable maintenance. Based on what was provided to us in the documents and based on our visual inspection of the project after it was constructed, these are our conclusions. The outlet extension is adequately designed to handle the expected flows from County ditch 63. The tile was with, was installed within an elevation of 0.1 feet, the gap in the tile joints is less than one inch, tile deflection is less than 5%, and all tile connections with the main line were made with watertight gasketed fittings. Based on those conclusions, the project is of public or private benefit, the project will not impair the utility of drainage system or deprive the affected landowners of its benefits, and the estimated cost of separable repairs is $14,768. With that, these are our recommendations as far as the petition to move forward. With that, I am more than willing to answer any questions or take any comments from the board, staff, or the public, if there are any.
Thank you. Thank you, Darryl.
Thank you.
For that report, and at this time, we'll open up the hearing for public comment, so please come to this podium and state your name and address for the record. We also ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes, and I will ask Mr. Meyer to keep track of time for us. All right. Is anybody wishing to come before the board and make a comment of any kind? Okay. Again, I guess if anybody's wishing to come to, up to the podium for comments on County ditch 63, and again, if there's anybody wishing to make a comment on County ditch 63. All right. If there are no comments from the public, I will close the public comment period of the hearing and bring the items to the board for further action.
I would move the acceptance of the draft findings in order, such subsequently amended, and order the petition for the reroute and petitional abandonment granted under Minnesota statutes 103E.227.
Second. Second. Kip, seconded by Vance. Any further discussion?
How many questions?
No questions? All right, and all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. All right. I guess that concludes the County ditch 63 public hearing. Thank you for coming for that. And we'll move on to the next, County ditch 92. This is the final hearing, the proposed petition for removal of portions of County ditch 92. Purpose of the hearing is to consider the petition and the viewers' report, which was created for the proposed petition. And now, we will now have the drainage staff, Ryan, go over the jurisdictional documents.
Thank you. And this is the final hearing for County ditch 92. Today's purpose is a petition pursuant to Minnesota statute 103E.805, which is a petition for removal of property from a public drainage system, was received by Blueworth County Property and Environmental Resources staff on December 8 of 2021. The drainage authority appointed Dan Ruby and Ron Ringquist as the viewers in charge of creating and submitting a formal bureau's report to reflect the submitted petition. Engineer Charles Dave Brandon with ISG was also appointed to assist in the viewers' report. Both appointments were made on January 25 of 2022. The viewers' report was submitted to Blueworth County Property and Environmental Resources staff on September 8 of 2022, and at today's public hearing for the proposed petition and viewers' report for County ditch 92, we are asking for the drainage authority's approval of the drafted findings in order, as such as subsequently amended. Jurisdictional documents, so landowner notices were mailed on November 7 of 2022, and public affidavit was again made on November 1, 8, and the 15th of November 2022.
I'll move to accept the affidavits into the legal record. Can I move to accept the affidavits into the legal record? Second?
Second.
Second by Kip. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. I guess at this point, we'll now hear from the viewers to discuss the provided viewers' report. So, we have Dan and Ron.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board.
Morning.
Ron. As appointed Dan, Ruby, and myself, we worked on this, and a little bit about what happened. This ditch number 92 had a redetermination of benefits completed in 19, or 2019, let's make it a little newer than that. The original ditch was built in about 1973. The ditch system was constructed, benefits and damages established in that 1973, so there have been benefits to these properties for the past approximately 50 years. During the redetermination, the benefits to this particular property were determined. They were $271,613, and damages were paid for the acquisition of the grass buffer strip. What we were requested to do was to relook at this property as if there was a permanent easement established on the portions of the property and what the benefits would be if that, or what we would have recommended for benefits in 2019 if that easement were in place. It's our opinion that the property still received benefits even though a management change is being proposed as to the use of the property. That use and compensation for that use probably were not available if the ditch system had never been constructed, meaning that the wetlands would have already been wetlands, there would not have been a restorable wetlands, and therefore, there would not have been any compensation available to those wetlands or not equal compensation. There may have been some for enhancement, but they would not have been equal. So, what we looked at then is that the lands in the upland areas that would have qualified for compensation irregardless of the ditch's construction probably would not continue to benefit from that, or they would not have benefited, in our opinion. But those wetland acres that would not have qualified for compensation, the management change doesn't change the fact that the ditch allowed that management change to occur. So, the benefit is the same in our mind as if it was still used as agricultural. The proposed use is a highest and best use as wetland credits, which have a much higher value than agricultural lands, but we don't consider that that was necessarily a benefit from the ditch more than the cost of the choice to change the use itself. There are some additional upland acres that are still remaining outside the easement area, and we've left benefits to those acres, about 13 acres of tillable ground that is outside of the proposed easement area. With that, if this would have been in place in 2019, our recommended benefits would have been $120,107. Now, we do not consider reduced maintenance, we saw no evidence as to monetary value of that. What we looked at solely was a property difference in value because of the drainage system being constructed, not anything to do with outside or other agreements as to maintenance or the cost of rerouting. We just looked solely at the value added to those properties, in our opinion. So.
Okay.
Questions from the board?
Any questions from the board?
I don't think it's this time.
This time. All right. And at this point, thank you, Ron. We'll have at this point, open up the hearing for public comment, so please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. We will ask that you keep your comments to no more than three minutes, and I will, of course, again, ask Mr. Meyer to please keep time for us. So, at this point, is anybody wishing from the audience to make any comments on ditch 92? Okay. Again, anybody wishing to make comments on ditch 92, come forward. And again, third time, we got one. There we go. Okay, you have to state your name and address. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Dean Zimmerley with the Gistson Hunter Law Firm in Mankato, Minnesota, New Ulm, Minnesota. I represent the petitioner on this for the asking of the removal of this property. I reviewed the proposed order that I believe Mr. Van Brugan has drafted for the board. The board's trained attorney on this. I believe it fairly reflects the discussions that I had had with him. I think it reflects the fact that this, the modifications to the drainage system, the installation, this wetland will, you know, ultimately, it provides a couple of major benefits to the system. It does reduce the peak flows downstream, that's going to reduce erosion and the cost of maintenance downstream because of that extra storage in the system, and this new drainage ditch around the system, or around the wetland area that was built as part of this project is, it's just simply better constructed, it's using kind of current engineering standards versus the ditch that was originally rerouted, and that's going to have a better life expectancy, less, less repair costs. And I think that the agreement and the numbers that And I think that the agreement and the numbers that we came up with, and the numbers that Mr. Ringquist came up with, although we certainly thought they maybe could have been lower on the benefit side, they're acceptable to us, and I think it'd be appropriate for the board to adopt the proposed order as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean.
And then, again, do we have anybody else wishing to come forward and comment? Ditch 92? Okay, at this point, hearing none. We'll then bring it back to the board to additional, since there are no additional comments, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion and a second to approve the findings and order.
I move to accept the findings and order.
By Kevin, is there a second?
I'll second.
Kevin will second? Okay.
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chair, but I would just like to thank Andy and his partners in doing a project like this, because this is very beneficial to the ditch systems, although we can struggle back and forth of what that benefit is. But these are a very much needed program, and I appreciate people taking risk and reaching out and doing projects like this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other? Kevin, at this time, then, motion in front of us? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, carries. This concludes our County Ditch 92 public hearing. Thank you for your attendance here. And then we have...
Fifty-six.
Yeah, 56. County 56, and...
Thank you, Darryl.
Thank you. At this point, we have Ryan. Would you like to frame this up to speed on the 56?
Yes, sir. Just a quick memo about the County Ditch 56. There's a cooperative cleaning agreement. Purpose for the memo today is as part of a cooperative agreement between the City of Lake Crystal, Bluerth County, and other organizations. Funding for cleaning for sediment buildup to portions of County Ditch 56 outlet in the Crystal Lake inlet itself is being requested of the Bluerth County Commissioners and Drainage Authority for County Ditch 56. Based on estimates provided by the Drainage Authority engineer, it is estimated that the Drainage Authority's portion to clean down to legal ditch grade, current legal ditch grade, would not exceed $12,000. Due to the cooperative efforts, staff recommends that the County Ditch 56 public drainage system commit to participate in the removal cost not to exceed $12,000. Today's requested action of the Bluerth County Board of Commissioners acting as a Drainage Authority for County Ditch 56 is to approve the attached resolution resulting in the contribution of funds towards the sediment removal cost. We are also requesting board action approval, so two separate approvals here for County Ditch 56 project agreement between the City of Lake Crystal, Old Meyer Construction, and also Bluerth County. So there's two separate items there, sir.
I'll move to approve the resolution.
Second. It's been moved and second to approve the resolution? Any discussion? It's just the first one? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, carries. And then we have the...
I'll move to approve the agreement.
Move to approve the agreement. Kevin, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vance? Again, all right.
Mr. Chair, may I just add one additional comment on this agreement? This is bringing in $28,000 of county funds that we're using American Rescue Plan funds to help with clean water sorts of efforts. And so I just wanted to clarify that in addition to the $12,000 that the ditch system is providing, the county using ARP dollars will provide $28,000, and the city of Lake Crystal will be providing the remainder needed to complete the project.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. The amendment in front, or the motion in front? Any further discussion? All those in favor saying a five, saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, carries. All right. Thank you.
Good day.
Thank you, Ryan. All right. Are we already on Human Services? I know you got here early.
We had Angie this morning.
Angie, yes, we have Angie.
Good morning, Angie.
Good morning, Angie.
Good morning. Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I am here this morning to bring to the Human Services report. We have three action items and a couple of information and discussion items. Would you like me to go through all three action items first or individually?
Yeah, sure.
All at once? Okay. The first two items are from Public Health specifically. They are the Greater Area Mankato United Way Partnership Agreement. And the purpose of this agreement is to formally establish a partnership with United Way to continue to be able to administrate Human Services programs funded by the United Way. We do get funding from the United Way at the current time, and that goes to our program called First Steps. And this is a program for pregnant women to children aged up to kindergarten, to connect them to community resources and provide some home visiting. And so this has been a great partnership, and we hope to see this continued into the future. We do not have funding levels for 2023, and so this partnership agreement comes first, and then if we are funded, that will be announced after the United Way campaign. And so the current 2022 funding amount is $76,588, and so we're hoping for continued funding into next year. The second item is an agreement with Minnesota Department of Human Services for child and teen checkup. This is also another service provided by our Public Health Unit. And the purpose of this contract is for the Minnesota Department of Human Services to engage Bluerth County to provide outreach services to children, birth to age 20, that are enrolled in medical assistance programs to ensure that they're receiving needed health and medical services. So some of the things that we do are phone outreach specifically to address barriers such as limited English proficiency, transportation, or other barriers of access to this service. And then staff also participate in community events to assure access and improve outreach efforts for this purpose. The funding that is being presented to us for 2023 is $116,255, which is almost a 20% decrease, an 18.7% decrease from last year's grant. And the reason for this decrease is there was an area health system that is providing outreach to their own patients, which is a really good thing. We do want, we do want health systems to continue to provide their own outreach as well, but this is a service that we also provide. And so this is a model that's $26.50 per eligible child, and that's how this is calculated on an annual basis. And so the term of this contract is January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2023. And then the last action item is a children's mental health screening grant. And the purpose of this grant is to provide mental health services to youth in our community funded by the Department of Human Services. This is a renewal grant. We do get this grant every year, and it has increased by $14,645. And so the current total grant for 2023 is $50,777. The term of the contract is January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2023. And so what's a little unusual about this grant is that the title is Children's Mental Health Screening Grant, but the children who benefit from this are not children in the Children's Mental Health Unit for Human Services, because those children have and are receiving children's mental health services. So the children who do benefit from this are often those that are involved in our child welfare system or correction systems. And so this is identification of mental health needs. So that's that early intervention piece in those programs. And so without this, they would otherwise have, not have access to those screening services. So those are the three action items that I bring for you today.
I would move to approve. Vance moves to approve the three items? Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Kevin seconds. Got understanding?
Mm-hmm.
So it looks good. All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, carries. That's great. Now you've got some informational items.
Yes, I do have three informational items. They're on two separate handouts. Two of the items are combined on the first chart. And so the first one that I'm going to talk about is the licensed family daycare homes and the licensed child foster care homes. And so that is the chart or the graphic with the arrows on it. And so this is a representation of some of the volume of homes that we license in Bluerth County. And so for perspective, we have three FTEs serving all programs and licensing. And so the program that's not represented on this chart, and we actually bring that at a different time of the year, is adult programs for adult foster care. And so these are two of the three licensing programs, but the theme today is children, obviously, and with the informational items. And so we're talking about licensed family daycare and licensed child foster care. So you can see that unfortunately, on the left-hand side, the upper left-hand corner, the newly licensed homes, that's an annual count. So in 2018, we licensed seven, 19 was two, 2020 was seven, and so on and so forth. So you're seeing the number decrease overall, and that is concerning to us because we do greatly value licensed family daycare in our community. Please note that the state does license childcare centers, so this is just family daycare. And then overall, the total number of homes, so on the left is how many this, how many per calendar year, how many new homes? And then the total number of homes are also decreasing. So we go from 2018 of 103 down to year-to-date, we have 82 currently operating and licensed family daycare homes. And so this is something that our licensing staff are obviously aware of, of this decrease. And so there are efforts underway to encourage the development of new family daycare homes. It's a service that is incredibly needed. A lot of our families are highly dependent on family daycare in the community. And so we do assist individuals with the process. If they show interest, we do engage them and assist through that licensing process. So we love to get the word out about this.
Okay. Question, is there a question? I was wondering, with the daycare homes, then, has that, like, COVID stunt made impact?
You know, I do think that COVID did have some impacts. We saw COVID impacts across our system widely. Specifically, there were changes with, you know, in any of our systems, whether it be educational or workforce or anything, when COVID impacts came into a space, it impacts everyone around them. And so family daycare and daycare centers, in fact, daycare settings, were not absent that impact. So if there is a COVID diagnosis, you know, obviously, particular precautions need to be taken into place. Whether that had a direct impact on newly licensed homes, that I don't, I don't really know at this point. But I do know that there are continual, obviously continual pressures from a licensing standpoint, state licensing standpoint, for quality. And so that's something that we don't want to compromise, is quality. But I do know that any time that we add on additional regulations and things, it does make operations sometimes more challenging. So there's a pro and a con, and there's, those things that need to be, you know, have to be weighed. The pros and cons need to be balanced. So, you know, I think there are a number of factors, specifically seeing COVID, I think that that could be a contributing factor, but I don't think it's a one and only factor.
I see, like, in 2022, there's only been two newly licensed homes. Is there like a, is there like a cost prohibitive? Like, is it an expensive process? I'm assuming, right? Because you gotta, you know, update your home and making sure everything is safe and quality. So are there programs for individuals who are looking to start a daycare in their home but maybe can't, don't have those startup funds? Because, you know, in 2020, 2021, we saw a lot of disposable income, and those numbers are really great, but then we see such a decrease in the year, which inflation hit really hard.
Yeah. Yes, there are some programs, and sometimes it's city-specific, and sometimes it's geographic-specific. And so there are some grant funds that are available. Sometimes they're, you know, forgivable loans or things like that. And so if people have questions about, is there any opportunity or any funding available to me, it would be really good for them to reach out to our licensors, because they're going to be able to help sort them through what might be available in their area. At the bottom of the graph, the licensed child foster care has a bit of a dip in terms of newly licensed homes. From 2018, 21, we're licensed. And then you see that decrease slightly, but year-to-date for 22 is 15. But if you look at the, at the green circle there, we have 20, we've had 29 referrals for licensing. And so that, what that shows us is there's initial interest. And so those that actually made it all the way through the process, it does take some time for that to happen. We're hopeful that that number will be higher by the end of the year. We're hopeful to see at least a couple of, couple more come through. And so, you know, we hope to see that that number steadies out over time. The lower right-hand corner is the licensed child foster care homes, the total number. So in 2018, we had 50, and then you saw it kind of level out there for a little bit, and then now it's jumping up. In year-to-date, 22, we have 69. So that's really good news in terms of newly licensed homes. And so it's important to keep in mind that we license the homes that are in this county. It's not always the children that we place in foster care that go into homes in Bluerth County. Many of them are, are children here from Bluerth County, but some are out of county as well, and so we're responsible for the licensing of those homes. In the green circle, 14 homes are relative caregivers. And that is a statistic which we want to see continue to rise, because what that means is if there's a child in need of placement, of foster care placement, it's wonderful for them to have a home to go to, that's a licensed home and a welcoming home. It's even better if we can have them with relative caregivers, because they're familiar with the individuals, and we can keep that family unit connected oftentimes much easier. And so it's a win on both sides to have a good home for them to go to. It's even better if we can have a stable relative placement. And so we often see grandparents, or we see aunts, uncles, extended family members kind of in that category. And that is something that our child welfare, child protection staff actively engage in every single case that they work on with, with child protection. So first line is, is there a relative that is viable that we can place this child with? And so that's something that, that happens, and that's a very time-sensitive licensing process, obviously, that our licensors engage those families with. And so, so this number is a little bit higher, and it's really good to see that, but we still do encourage development of having child foster care homes, because these are the homes that we need at a moment's notice oftentimes. And so having that in our community is, is a really good resource for our residents.
Thank you for that.
The last item that I have for you is the basic sliding fee, which is Child Care Assistance Program. And so these are funds that come from the Minnesota Department of Human Services, and we are allocated a certain amount of funding every year, and that, that funding changes year over year, and it's highly dependent on how much we spent in the prior year. And so our allocation for direct services this year is one, almost $1.2 million. And again, that is due to our allocation and usage from last year. Last year, we used 100.74% of our allocation, and we did not run a waiting list. So the amount of need met the amount that we had available. And at the end of the year, there are counties that don't spend all of their money, and so if we go over 100%, the state will allocate more money to those counties that do go over. So there is a balance. So there is a balancing out. We don't want to be way over 100%, because then that is risking, you know, in terms of county dollars. But we do know if we can stay close to that 100%, and even slightly over, that will balance out with the way the department allocates these funds. At this point, because our projection, or because our allocation went up significantly, we are projected to use, at this point, 82%. We don't have a waiting list at the present time, so anyone that has come forward for needing childcare assistance funding for basic sliding fee, we have been able to process and allocate if they are eligible. And so that's a really nice thing. There are some counties that do have waiting lists, and that's quite unfortunate for those families, and we're sitting in a good spot here in Blue Earth County.
Every last few years, I don't think, it's not always been that good, I guess, has it?
We've stayed relatively stable in terms of using right at our amount. A couple of years ago, we did entertain a waiting list, because it was, we were seeing our usage and utilization, and this was pre-COVID, just slightly pre-COVID. We were using quite a bit of our allocation, and we've been able to manage without a waiting list, which is a good thing. It's something that we talk about on a regular basis, where we're at with funding, so we have regular conversations about this, because we want to make sure that this funding is available to residents.
Thank you, Angie. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Great information. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
You too.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving there. All right, then we have, we have Bob Meyer, the administration.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, our first item is the county board minutes for November 8th.
Minutes.
I will move to approve.
Vance moves to approve. Your second. Kip seconds. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed carries.
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated.
I agree with the bills.
I'll move to pay the bills.
Kip moves, Kevin seconds. Any discussion, any questions? All right, I guess hearing none, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed carries. All right, and we have, I guess, human resources?
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number seven in your pack. It is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Do have two action items for the board's consideration today. First is authorization to approve a leave of absence for Jeff Wersel, effective January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2033. This is in relation to his election as the new sheriff. Minnesota Statute 3.088 does kind of address this leave of absence issue, in that it states that an employee of a political subdivision that is elected to a full-time county office is entitled to a leave of absence from the public office with the right of reinstatement as provided in that statute. And the reinstatement talks about that upon the completion of the final day of the term to which the official is elected, the employee shall be reinstated to the public position held at the time of entry into taking the county office, or be placed in a public position of like seniority status and pay if it is available at the same salary, which would have been received if the leave had not been taken. And there are three conditions associated with that reinstatement. One is that the position has not been abolished. The second is that the county official provides a written application for reinstatement within 30 days after the expiration of the elected term. And number three, that the request for reinstatement is made not later than 10 years after granting the leave. So that explains the 10-year timeframe associated with this particular action. I will also say that our Blue Earth County Employee Handbook does have language related to county employees who are elected to office that also provide some opportunity for this leave of absence. So recommending approval of this 10-year leave of absence.
Move to approve. Vance moves to approve. Your second?
Second.
Second by Kip. Any discussion? It's all clear, I think. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed carries. Your second?
The second item, and then under the action item, is authorization for the county board chairperson and the county administrator to sign an agreement with the Minnesota Public Employees Association. This is the sheriff's non-licensed essential unit, or the correctional officers in the jail. We have reached a tentative agreement on a three-year agreement. I just ran through a number of elements of this proposed contract. There were a number of language cleanup items that were included, just things that maybe hadn't been attended to in prior years, so there were a number of those items. Then there was changes to the funeral leave section, which brought in some family members into the definition to be consistent with other bargaining groups that we already have in place. The wages, kind of the big thing with this three-year agreement, is in 2023, there would be a $1.50 general wage adjustment, plus the implementation of the classification and compensation study that the board is aware of. Then for 2024, a proposed general wage increase of 3.25%. And for 2025, a proposed general wage increase of 2.5%. There also was an increase in the lead worker pay from $4 to $5 an hour when that provision is utilized. There also were increases in shift differential. The rates for 2023 would be 95 cents an hour for those hours worked from 5:00 PM to 5:00 AM. That rate would increase to $1.15 in 2024, and to $1.25 in 2025. That also is rates that are consistent with other bargaining agreements that we have in place for those years. This contract, you may recall, had a provision for retention pay because of some of our staffing challenges within the jail. That provision has fully been removed from this contract with the implementation of the classification and compensation study, because we've kind of rolled that into the overall implementation of that. And then lastly, there's a provision around field training officer language that provides some benefit to an employee providing that FTO service. Again, this is consistent with language that we have in other bargaining agreements. So this particular group will see fairly significant increases due to the classification and compensation study, and we hope that that helps with some of the staffing challenges that the board is well aware of, related to the jail. So recommending approval of this three-year agreement.
I move approval.
Kip moves to approve, and a second by Kevin. Any further discussion, questions, all those then in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed carries.
May we just provide a quick little update for the board? I did receive a call from a business agent yesterday with our highway group, and they have tentatively agreed to a three-year agreement as well. So we're starting to make some progress in terms of getting those agreements. Just this morning, I received notice from our three AFSCME groups that they're willing to reopen the contracts, so we'll be trying to get to the table with them as soon as we can to continue that conversation. So things are moving. Hopefully, we get those agreements sorted out by the first of the year, so we can get it fully implemented.
So the agreements that are settled and are going to take the new study in the classifications, where all start the first of the year, is that the plan?
That is correct.
So if we don't get them all done, we'll have several pay scales?
Yeah, we'll have a couple that we're working with. Still optimistic that we can reach agreement with these other groups. We have a little time into January, just based on pay periods and stuff, but we're going to keep working to get those agreements done before that timetable comes into play.
Well, thank you for that.
Yep. That's good. All right.
Under informational items, then, just a couple items to report to the board. We did have a voluntary demotion of sergeant in our correctional officer area to a legal assistant. Then we had an employment of a clerical specialist, too, in our public health unit. We did fill a correctional officer position in the jail, and we've initiated recruitment to refill that correctional officer sergeant position in the jail. And we did receive a resignation of a property and environmental resource specialist, too, and initiate recruitment to refill that position. Be happy to answer any questions that the board might have on any of those items?
Do you have any questions regarding items mentioned? All right.
That's all I have for you, Mr. Chair.
All right, moving right along. I guess we have commissioners' reports. Let's start with, let's start with Julianne on the right there.
Since our last meeting on the 9th, I had the Region 9 Development Board meeting. I went well. And then on the 16th, I had a Community Education Advisory Board meeting, which was really good, and we discussed the impact that our volunteers in the community give to the school in terms of teachers' assistance and community education, which was really cool to see the community come together to teach our children. So that is the end of my report.
Thank you, Julianne. Kevin?
Okay, since our November 8th board meeting, on November 9th, I attended the Blue Earth County Fair Association annual meeting, and they'd asked me to bring, I said, at your tables, what the annual report and a one-pager put together by the 4-H. But board members and all those intended wanted to thank the county for our support of the county fair, to make sure that we're aware of the dates of next year's county fair. That's included in that handout, so they appreciated that. On the 10th of November, Soil and Water Conservation District meeting, and mayors and clerks. On Veterans Day on the 11th, participated in an AMC drainage stakeholder call, as well as attended the Veterans Day events here in Mankato and in Lake Crystal. The 15th, attended the GMG Business Awards. On the 16th, we had Association of Minnesota Counties Drainage Work Group meeting that I attended, as well as a Crystal Waters meeting, board meeting, and informational meeting. And those at Crystal Waters wanted, again, to thank the county with the help on DISH 56, and appreciative of that. And now we can kind of start on that next bucket and work on some water quality issues, things like that. On the 17th, Kip and I, we had an extension committee. 18th was a GABRBa Joint Policy and Technical Committee meeting. And then on the 21st, last night, attended the Lincoln Park Neighborhood Association, and former Commissioner Drew wanted to make sure that everybody had a copy of their latest newsletter, so that's at your desk as well. Calls and concerns have primarily been by the MFS Compost Site, a couple on the Rapidan Dam, but it's been a little quieter two-week period. That concludes my report.
Kevin, I mean, Kevin. And we have Kip.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My schedule's a little bit lighter the last couple of weeks, but after the county board meeting, I had several statewide emergency communication committee assignments that we had meetings on. I was unfortunately not at SWCD or mayors and clerks. We had our MRCI board executive meeting. Not a whole lot going on there. Everything's running pretty well. Brian's winding things up, and we're in the process of trying to get a new director in there. There was two internal candidates, and at the point, Brian was reporting to us, there was nobody from the outside at that point, but it was still open for a bit yet. Kevin mentioned extension. The only thing I would add to that is that Randy, our 4-H educator, is moving on, and so we'll be in the process of finding another 4-H leader for us. After that, I had MVAC last night. Things are going really well there. The programs are running really well, but the most exciting news we have is the fact that they paid off our building last night, or last month. And so we had cake, and so I break in that. It was 10 years. It was supposed to be, it was supposed to balloon out this year, but they've been doing pretty good in the thrift store, and they were able to pay back, pay off some.
That's exciting.
Yeah.
That's exciting.
Now, unfortunately, we gotta spend, could be millions on the roof, but, so now you don't have a, you don't have a payment on the building, but we'll have some very extensive roof repair in the next couple of years.
It's a big roof.
And the thrift stores are doing extremely well. I mean, it is just amazing how much money that those thrift stores take in, and the small amounts of pricing, it's amazing, so. But that's my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Kip. Vance?
The last board meeting was the 8th. That afternoon, I had an electric vehicle discussion with, on Zoom, with Josh Milo, Brian Tilges, Glenn Levine, who is a past commissioner of NDOT, and Jim Burgness, who is a CEO of National Car Charging. So I had a lot of good information on that. On the 9th, I had my Transportation Alliance Annual Meeting up in the cities. On the 10th, we had mayors and clerks down in Amboy, and that was kind of fun to go down to Amboy and talk to folks. It was actually a pretty decent meeting, you know. Post-COVID, I think finally we're getting our mayors and clerks meetings getting going again. On the 14th, I had a meeting with the Arts and Cultural Heritage Foundation for TDS in the morning, and then that afternoon, I had my detox board meeting. On the 16th, Transportation Alliance Legislative Zoom. On the 17th, I had TDS Board, and then I had a NACo rec Zoom. On the 18th, I had TDS Wage and Salary Discussion with the Executive Director. And that's the end of my report.
Okay, thank you, Vance. All right, and mine, yeah, we had November 9th, did have the Rita Advisory Meeting, at that forbid. And November 10th, we did have mayors and clerks, and on Veterans Day, did take on that on the 11th there in Mankato. The 16th, had the Blue Earth County Health Improvement Projectship Leadership Team Meeting. We haven't had that for quite a while, and so it's good to get that moving again. And on the 17th of November, had our Partners for Board Meeting, our first one with our new director, Tricia Anderson. And things are going well there. And November 18th, did have an All Seasons Arena meeting with, I guess it's to revise makeup of the board, but activities with rinks, improvements, and so forth. That'll continue. Remember, 22nd, then, this morning, up at the crack of dawn, it was always dawn. It's dark yet. I had the airport commission meeting. Michael's calling. Yeah. Yeah, there you have it, seven in the morning. Yeah. And so that concludes my report. And I guess before we recess, I'd like, you know, I thank the commissioners here, but I'd like to take a minute before we recess to acknowledge to the board and everybody of Julianne for your service to the county. And, you know, Julianne expressed interest in filing for the county commissioner district one in May of this year, and she was appointed as a commissioner in mid-June. This is impressive for a short time, because Julianne participated in 11 board meetings, five work sessions. Additionally, she attended committee meetings and the annual. Additionally, she attended committee meetings and the annual county board road tour, which I'm sure was a highlight.
For sure.
And possibly more, and possibly even says more memorable, a neighborhood meeting, yeah, so that was good. And so, at this point, Julianne, we want to thank you for your willingness to step up and serve the residents of Blue River County, and you can be proud.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you. It was, I appreciate you trusting me, and it's been an honor to serve.
Thank you, again. And we'll, at this point, what, we have to recess the meeting, and then, and then we'll take a photo with you.
All right. I'll move to recess.
Second. Kevin Kip, and then second by Vance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed carries. And we recessed. And at this point, we want to take a photo with Julianne, and we got a certificate here, I guess we want to put it on there.
Might be by the flag.
Right back here by the flag, will that work?
Thank you.
Works. All right. How are we all getting in the photo, or is it just the chairman?
Can we get everybody in the photo? I don't know.
Take people out, and then take them away.
It's just a light.